Hello, everybody. I guess I'm the one to get things started here. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Chris Patrino. I'm the president here at Go give it Community College. And I'd like to welcome everybody here on behalf of the Board of Trustees, Administration and Staff. We're thrilled to host events like this. Part of our vision is big on community and regions and, you know, Go give it Community College is a community college. So we're thrilled you're here. Use our facilities and forums like this. It's great. So welcome and thank you for being here.
Good evening. Several years ago, when I became Executive Director of the Ironwood Chamber of Commerce, the Chamber started holding City Commission Candidate Forums here at the Go Give It Community College. In fact, there are a few candidates seated here this evening who also took part in those very first forums. The reason the Chamber organized these forums was to create a structured venue where citizens could come, meet the candidates and propose policy questions to them such that every candidate would have an opportunity to express their views. A forum is not in bait either between the candidates or between the candidate and the audience. It's rather an opportunity for each candidate to present their views on community issues that have a citywide impact. It's also an opportunity for attending voters to gain additional personal perspectives on candidates either before or after the forum time. As five of these folks gathered here tonight will be elected City Commissioners, and we hope they all work together in an environment of mutual respect. Post-COVID, the League of Women Voters, upper country Go give it range unit, assumed the role of candidate forum organizers for which they are to really be commended. This takes a lot of work to put this together. The National League of Women Voters is a 100-year-old, nonpartisan grassroots political organization which encourages active participation in government and works to increase understanding of major public policy issues. Also attending the forum this evening is Jen Jacobson, back here, Ironwood City Clerk. Through over 20 years of municipal experience, Jen has successfully administered 23 elections in Go give it County and has a profound understanding of the electoral process. Please feel free to talk with Jen after the forum if you have any questions about the upcoming election, its administration, or technicalities regarding registration or other things. Thank you all for coming and welcome to the Candidates to the Forum.
Thank you, Michael. I think at this point, good evening. My name is Glenn Ackerman Bear. I will serve as the forum moderator. Some important information and rules about the forum structure. It might sound like you just heard some of this because you did, but I'm going to share it again. The purpose of this candidate forum is to allow candidates to state their views on a variety of questions or topics related to city governments so the audience can learn more about the candidates. There will be no directorial questioning of the candidates by the audience or back and forth discussion between the candidates. This event is not a debate. Candidates are asked to respond only to the questions asked by the moderator. Candidates are free to address any appropriate issues during their opening or closing remarks. Audience members may submit written questions to the League's question associates seated in the back. The League question or associates will compile similar audience questions and select questions across a variety of various topics related to city government that will give the audience broad-ranging information about the candidates and their views. Questions may be edited to remove partisan or inappropriate language. Due to the large number of candidates and time constraints, it may not be possible to ask all the questions submitted. If you submitted questions that were not asked, we encourage you to contact the candidates directly. The League has no ability to fact-check questions or candidates' comments during this forum. Therefore, fact-checking is your responsibility as an involved citizen. The question answers will be limited to one-minute timed response. My lovely timers over here. At the conclusion of which, a time of that time, a beeper will sound and the timer will hold up a red stop sign. We will also give you a 10-second warning by holding the stop sign up backwards. So you'll be able to see that you have 10 seconds left. At that time, we would ask that candidates respect the one-minute time limit and stop speaking. So the next candidate will be able to be asked the same question and provide their answer. Question answers will rotate, so the same candidate will not be required to answer the first question every time. Candidates will be allowed an opening introduction of themselves and why they're running for the Ironwood City Commission. We're asked that you limit that to one minute. And a closing statement that will be one or two minutes depending on how fast we move through all the questions. So I'll let you know when we get to that. This is a League of Women Voters-sponsored event, and as such, we will not allow any campaigning or partisan material in this area. We will not allow any loud or rude comments in the form of clapping, booing, hissing, whistling, yelling, et cetera, et cetera, from the audience. If this occurs, we will stop the forum until the audience members can be quieted before continuing. Recordings of this event will be made and we do ask that recordings of this event be made only by the League. Whether they be in person or on a digital device may not be used without the express written approval of the League. The League will only allow audio/video of this event to be broadcast in its entirety. No voice, image, or other duplication of this event may be used by any media outlet or candidate's representative or campaign in any campaign advertising. We will be recording the statements. These recordings will be made available for viewing on the League's website and Facebook page. In accordance with FCC rules, it will be shown unedited and in its entirety. We will now allow the candidates to introduce themselves using one minute for an introduction, starting with Ms. Kim Corcoran.
All right. Do you want an introduction and why we're running or just?
Yes, please.
All right. My name is Kim Corcoran and I am running for City Commission. I am proud of the progress that the City of Ironwood has made over the past 16 years, and I want to stay on board and make sure that a progress keeps going. I think we've come a long, long way. It's my home too, so I want to make it the best that I can. I've been on the Commission for 16 years, eight as the mayor. In a nutshell, I've been on the library board, the parking rec board, wastewater board, DIDA, EDC board, and I'm just excited about being involved and I try to jump in the best that I can. I have been a citizen of Ironwood for 34 years in my prior life. I am retired now. I was a school principal for the Michigan Department of Corrections, so I know the tie between having community, having education, getting out there and making a difference. I worked in every prison in the UP, so I know how to deal with communications, with people and difficult situations. So I love where I live and I just want to keep it going. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Dean.
My name is Tim Dean. I'm an attorney. Or I wasn't an attorney. I just retired a few months ago. I came to Detroit. I've been here for 47 years, met and married my wife, have raised two kids here. They were educated here. I want to be on the City Commission because I want to keep the progress Kim was talking about going. Two former Commissioners aren't running, so I want to help fill that gap and keep the progress going. I was a city attorney for 10 years. I was Corporation Counsel for Iron County for 10 years. I've been attorney for six townships in the Go give it County. I was on, I was the attorney for the Go give it Iron Wastewater Authority, the Go give it Range Water Authority, the Powderhorn Area Utility District, and a number of other municipal entities.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Mr. Frank.
Sure. I'm Steve Frank. Considering how outspoken I've been over the years, in part I'm running because I really feel an obligation to do so. But mostly, it's because it's the next step. So over the past years, I have picked up literally thousands of bags of litter from our community. I've cleaned up many, many dump sites. Last summer, I removed over 10 tons of dirt and sod from the sidewalk on Burma Road. I cleared off the tennis courts at Norrie Park. That was nine pickup truck loads and two city dump truck loads. This year, I weeded most of the downtown. I pruned the trees and then I cleaned up the entire sidewalk and playground at the Catholic Church. And over the past five years, I have cleaned up almost 900 tires. It's 329 hauled out Blake Belinsky alone, the rest from all the other ponds, the trails, road sides, vacant lots, you name it. I don't want this to sound like I'm bragging. I just think the candidates should be judged not on their words, but on what they've already accomplished. But unfortunately, there's a big list of things that I can't do.
It's Corpy.
My name is Lauren Corpy. I am a teacher at Wakefield-Merinesco School and I'm a local business owner. I went to college here at Western State College of Colorado and at UW Superior. I try to be an active citizen. I'm currently on the Ironwood Theater Board and on the City Commission. I am a lifelong resident of Ironwood and I care about the direction of our community. I think that running is part of something that you can do to promote your community. I want Ironwood to be a positive place to live for myself and for its residents. I want to promote a positive community environment. I want people to feel welcome here. I want everyone to feel accepted and like there's a place for them. And in my opinion, if you care about your community, you should stand up and you should try and do something positive. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corpy. Mr. List.
Hi, I'm Ryan List. I've been in Ironwood now for 18 years and I, you know, I've seen a lot of good things come to the city most recently, the last few years, and it's been a real benefit to be here. And I think I'm running because, you know, I want to be part of this. I want to continue to be, you know, move the city forward. And I want to continue to be, you know, a role model for my kids. And that's important to me because I think today, when you look at what's going on, whatever your political affiliation is or isn't, I think now is the time to get involved in government to some extent. I think that's necessary. Additionally, I, you know, I work in higher education, working with grants, working with budgets. I have some experience with that and I think I can really assist the city in its grant opportunities. And additionally, there's a few areas I think I could help address as well with infrastructure, water, and some other areas. So I think I could, you know, be a benefit in that regards.
Thank you, Mr. List. Mr. Milton.
Jim Milton, nice to see you all. So, so you have to be a team player if you wish to be a City Commissioner. You have to, you have to, you have to, there's give and take. There's a million great causes. You have to be a volunteer. So I think that I've volunteered and I've helped with every aspect of Ironwood. The more, the more you learn, the more you, the more you see, the more you find out you have to help. And, and I've always been that kind of a person. So judge me on my past actions. I started and built the Go give it County Transit in Ironwood. It was important to me that that building and that facility be in Ironwood, even though there were Mental Health moved to Wakefield, Community Action Agency moved to Besmer. There are a number of other entities that left and I wanted to keep Ironwood strong. I started Santa's Headquarters with three, at the first week, three great ladies. After that, it was 100 great people and made sure that children had great Christmases in Go give it Counties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milton. Miss Oliver Eigel.
Oliver Eigel, yes.
Eigel, sorry?
Yes.
I will fix it for next time. Thank you.
Problem. My name is Ashley Oliver Eigel. I am also a lifelong resident of Ironwood. I was born and raised here as well as my family was raised here as well, so I have strong roots in our community. I'm currently a special education teacher for Besmer Area Schools. And I have been a social worker in our community as well. I have a master's degree now in special education. I've been involved in organizing youth activities from everything from, I just started a flag football program and I do swimming lessons and I do coaching for every possible baseball, basketball, any sports that my children want to play. So I would like to see a vision of our community for children and families improving and keeping people here.
Ms. Oliver Eigel. Mr. Roush.
Thank you all. Ken Roush, my background, born and raised Chicago, Illinois, graduate of DeVry University in computer science. Spent 25 years of my life working in corporate America as Vice President, Chief Information Officer and Hire Consultant in the form of add, change, and delete in corporate America. What is Ironwood? Ironwood is a big company, right? So we need to work together. We need to look at what are the priorities for the people and how to prioritize and put these teams and these committees in the right structure so that we can accomplish what we need moving forward. I own a small business in town, been in Hurley and Ironwood since 2004, here to stay. Opened a business. It's successful today. We're opening up a second business, 27 employees and growing and looking forward to being part of this committee and part of this opportunity to do economic development to help our organization, the City of Ironwood.
Thank you, Mr. Roush. Mr. Stensrum, like, did that right, Stensrum?
Yes, Stensrum.
Thank you.
Yeah. My name is Darren Carl Stensrum and it's the first time I ran for office and I'm looking forward to become a councilperson. And I I believe I will bring many talents to the city councils in my life experience. First getting a manufacturing engineer, then getting into rehabbing buildings in downtown Chicago, turned to law offices, worked for Neighborhood Housing Services to stop redlining, help with that insurance for the businesses, their properties, and of course, stop redlining. And then I became a industrial artist, continuing with rehabbing buildings and did a lot of storefronts throughout my time. And the last thing I would say is I hope to get enough votes to become the
Thank you, Mr. Stensrum. Okay, we're going to move on to Mr. Dean. He'll now get the first question because Ms. Corcoran had to introduce herself first. Okay, here's our first question. I will read it twice and then if you need me to repeat it, just give me the nod and I'll do it for when we get to you. What is the most important issue facing the city and how would you begin to address it? What is the most important issue facing the city and how would you begin to address it?
Well, blight is a big issue, you know. And the way to address it is we have a blight ordinance. I think we could shorten the process to be effective, be more effective. Yeah, and that would be up to the city attorney. So I would say, yeah, there actually is a couple, vacant housing and blight jobs. And that's what comes to mind right now.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Mr. Frank.
Biggest problem? Declining population. It's not a new issue, obviously. We've got steadily declining population for over 100 years now. But that fundamentally affects everything. It affects our tax base, which affects how much money we have to maintain our infrastructure. It affects our school system, affects everything. How do we solve that? No, it's not an easy solution at all, but we need to make sure that Ironwood is as attractive as possible for new residents. That means drastically lowering our ridiculous water deposit that we require for renters. That means looking into our tax rate. Our tax rate is higher. Go give it County is one of the highest in Michigan to begin with, and then Ironwood says, hold my beer, we can do it even, even higher. So looking at taxes, looking at our fee schedule, blight definitely, but yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. It's Corpy.
I think there's a bunch of smaller issues. I think Ironwood's doing a great job to try and address some of the issues that we've had in the past. Like Mr. Dean said, the blight is an issue and at our last goal setting meeting, we tried to expedite that process, but I do think that expediting it even more would be beneficial because nobody wants blighted property next to them. Vacant downtown businesses, I don't know if that means ordinances or communicating with business owners to make it more attractive to lease, communicating and trying to get people downtown to spend money in our community. And to echo on what Mr. Frank said, also keeping people in Ironwood, making this a comfortable, attractive place to live for people of all ages, all genders, all races. You know, having that community vibe where people feel included and they feel like they're needed and wanted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corpy. Ms. List.
Yeah, and I think I'll piggyback off of the idea of declining population, and that's an area that I think we can certainly address. The city's done a really nice job recently, I'd say, with revitalizing the downtown, making this beautiful, making it, you know, a place to come. There's been some really good work done there. Additionally, the, I think the aging infrastructure is an issue that needs to be addressed as well. And I think that these smaller issues, these smaller challenges that we can overcome, blighted properties, water quality, those are all areas I think we can address to help with, with the population itself. Part of that too has to do with economic development in the area. I think, you know, if I looked at, you know, looking at strategic plan and the beautification projects that have gone on in the parks, I think that's great. And I think that's moving, that will help, you know, retain young people. But I think becoming more of a incubator sort of city for small economic development, I think, could really benefit this area as well.
Thank you, Ms. List. Mr. Milton.
Sure. In Ironwood, the whole, the City of Ironwood depended on, on its infrastructure that was built during the mining heyday. And so we had, have a water system and we had one water pump that was made and it lasted more than 125 years. But someday it was going to fail. So, so my fellow Commissioners and I, we made that a priority. So now we have, we have a new pump house. We have refurnished wells. We have, there's five pumps, if I remember right, that, that if one fails, another one goes on board. If two fail, another one goes on board. Then the, the line that brought the water from, from the pump house to the city, there was one line and it was breaking all over. So now there's two lines. One is brand new and one's repaired. And so this city does not have to depend on 125-year-old infrastructure, new water, new sewer, new pump house, new wells, new transmission lines. It's a miracle. Thank you.
Ms. Oliver Eigel.
I would say that it's not just Ironwood, but as a whole, just the breakdown of family structure and continuing to keep people in the community. And I would say that trying to create affordable after-school activities, school programs, things like that for our youth to be active in, as well as possibility of, you know, community center type ideas and things like a pool that might be able to keep our entire community healthy and being able to promote a healthy living for all is things that I would like to see. You know, increasing some of the after-school programs, like I mentioned, and creating like a comprehensive type of family resource center where we can really build on the people in the community and how to make our community successful.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Eigel. Mr. Roush.
All right, you guys, this one's easy. The number one, the number one issue in our community is economic development. We're hearing tonight on decline in population, blight issues, vacant downtown businesses, and spending more money in Ironwood. How do we do that? Let's promote business in the community. Let's bring people in here. I've successfully built and managed and owned one large retail store in town that brings a lot of people into town. We're in the process of opening up a second store before the end of the year. Have numerous families that are dependent on these organizations that are very successful for what they're being compensated and how they're part of the community. So let's expand on that model and see what we can do to grow the community a little better, get some more businesses downtown and get some additional business in town. Why are people going to come here? They're going to come here to spend time and money. So let's give them an opportunity to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Roush. Mr. Stensrum.
Yes, I would like to see manufacturing moving into town and try to promote that in some way to have real jobs that last all year round. Because most of our jobs here are still like in the boomtown agents of the mine. We're still moving dirt to to have jobs for people to do, mostly like the interstructure. But what are we going to do when all the phases of the interstructure are completed and we don't have any real jobs? I, I, I think that's like number one on our list. So we can move from being a boomtown to being a real vital town that has jobs that last all year round and pay very well.
Thank you, Mr. Stensrum. Ms. Corcoran.
For me, I take a look at the most important issue is housing. If we want to have new faces, we need to have new places. It's like, we need to take a look at who's coming into our community, what our community looks like. So we have an aging community. Do we have appropriate housing for the, the aging, people who are here to recreate? And the new professionals, you know, do we have the appropriate housing for that? I know we've taken a look at our comprehensive plan. We've done a study to see what kind of housing we need. So some of the things we need to do is take a good look at what kind of grants are available. Take a look at reaching out to contractors. What do you need from the City of Ironwood for you to come and build here? Do we need to offer up property? Do we need to offer up infrastructure help, you know, as far as like the water and sewer? Or do we need help taking a look at those grants? Take a look at reaching out to the folks who have BRBOs or take a look at the person whose grandmother's house is sitting, doing nothing. It's vacant. Reach out to those folks, look to them sell, look to them to rehab. Take a look at zoning, you know, we need to get new faces, new places.
Thank you, Ms. Corcoran. I think Mr. Frank can hit up, okay? This is the part you all have to help me with, make sure I get it right as we're going through. But when tough budget choices come up, what values will guide your decision? Will that include means to lowering property taxes? When tough budget choices come up, what values will guide your decision? And will that include means to lowering property taxes?
I have a whole minute?
Yeah, a whole minute.
I can do World Hunger after that, sure. Lowering property taxes, I am not going to sit here and lie to you. The bulk of the property taxes that you pay to the City of Ironwood is the base rate that everybody pays, 20 some odd mils. All those other millages that you are paying, the people have voted those in. Okay? It's not that the City Commission says you must pay this. You, the people, are voting those in. The big one on that is the six and a half mils that are for former, for pensions for former police and fire. We cannot get rid of that, right? So how do we deal with tough budgetary concerns? I am a back-to-basic kind of person. I think instead of looking at these big expensive projects, there is a lot that we can do with smaller but consistent day-to-day effort.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Ms. Corpy.
I agree with Mr. Frank about the lowering of property taxes. It's not really something that we can do. But when it comes to tough budget choices, the values that'll guide my decision are overall health and welfare for the people of Ironwood. What is going to make our area better for its residents? At our goal-setting sessions that we've had while I've been on the Commission, we talk a lot about that. What does the community need? What's important for our residents? What do we hear them asking us about when I'm out, when I'm out in town or when I'm on the street? Or if I get a call or an email from somebody, what are they concerned about? It's not just me. It's not my, my vision for the city. I try to take into account what everybody needs and what's going to be best for the community as a whole.
Thank you, Ms. Corpy. Ms. List.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, lowering property taxes, that would be ideal. I think we all would appreciate that, but nonetheless, it may not be feasible. But there's other ways that we can help the residents, and that's really what it focuses on when you're making tough budgetary decisions is how are the everyday residents, how are the residents of Ironwood affected the most and make decisions that way? Example, you know, I've been a proponent of working on some of the, you know, the infrastructure with the water, lowering rates perhaps, that's one way to do it. But I think that's, that's also part of a Commissioner's role is to find out what sort of things when you're making those tough budgetary decisions, what's going to affect the, the population the most? It's going to hurt people. What's going to help people? And I think communicating that and actually having open sessions with your, your residents of the area to kind of determine, you know, where are, where are their needs and how can, you know, we play a role in helping them, I think, I think that's important to do, you know, as a Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. List. Mr. Milton.
Just read it again.
Sure. When, when tough budget choices come up, what values will guide your decision? Will that include means to lowering property taxes?
So as a City Commissioner, there are always tough budget decisions. And, you know, we have to keep the great people that we have working for the City of Ironwood. We want to keep the costs to the people that live here as low as we can keep them. But the most important thing, and I mean the most important thing of all, is we have to maximize our use of state and federal money and minimize our use of local and minimize our use of local dollars. And we have to have local dollars that match state and federal money, because most of the time it's gonna be eighty, twenty, seventy-five, twenty-five. So those dollars have to be saved, they have to be set aside, so that when the opportunity to fix a street, when the opportunity to fix our water, when the opportunity to fix a park comes along, we have that local match to bring in that state and federal money. And that's what we've done, and that's what we've built our town with. My friends that run Poten, Marquette, whatever, they are so jealous of what we're doing. And it's our city staff mostly, but it's us city commissioners too.
Thank you, Mr. Mildred. Ms. Oliver Eigel?
I would say that when it comes to tough budget decisions, the values that I would have is the vision of hope and unity and progress for our community. I think looking at what the growing economic pressures on working families are and seeing how we can benefit the community as a whole, like many of the other candidates have said already. Trying to make sure that we are looking at how can we benefit the people that are here and maybe attract other new people to come in, but making our community affordable, but then also benefiting the improvements that we need to help keep people here.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Eigel. Mr. Rauch?
All right. Logistically and logically, this is, the cost of living's going up, the cost of support and government is going up, the income's going down, we're declining in our population and that. So with the cost going up and the opportunity for income going down, we need to look elsewhere. We shouldn't have to rely on government entities in order to support our lifestyles. Let's look at businesses. Let's look at opportunities for economic development. Let's look at opportunities to partner with some of these businesses to see what they can bring into the programs. I'm working with the college with Glenn and others to see what we can do to help put together some internship-type programs. Bring the appropriate resources out of the colleges that can hit the ground running in these businesses that we need. So with the income going up and the opportunity for the cost going up, the opportunity for income going down, we need to look at other options.
Thank you, Mr. Rauch. Mr. Stenstrom?
Yeah, I've been informed that next year my taxes are gonna go up a whole third. That's a little bit hard for senior citizens to absorb that sort of increase. And as far as I know, there's not too many ways of really fighting that increase. It'd be nice to, if there was a way of really being able to protest that, that rate hike next year. I guess it has to do with inflation and, and I guess in the last, what, six months, it seems like inflation is gonna go up another twenty percent. So it seems like a dog chasing his own tail. Wish to see that there was some way of giving relief to seniors.
Sure. Thank you, Ms. Stenstrom. Ms. Corpy?
Values to guide my decision, we'd have to start with our comprehensive plan. It's a plan that we've had out there. We've surveyed citizens, we've gone out and talked to citizens, we've decided, you know, what we've collaborated is what they want, you know. For example, it's like, for a while there we wanted new parks. Now we don't want new parks, now we just wanna maintain the parks I have. So taxes and millages are what keep us running. So sometimes you can't really take a grasp at that, but what we could do is maybe we can delay some of our projects. Maybe we really don't need to do the water and sewer over in this area for another few more years. We can take a look at introducing cola costs to like utility rates. Instead of whopping you with a big increase rate away, maybe just a little bit here and there. So the cost of living does go up with the city, does go up with everybody else. Take a look at grants that are out there. Grants have been a big part of Ironwood's success. So our goal is make sure that we have shovel-ready projects, so when that grant drops, we're ready to go.
Thank you, Ms. Corpy. Mr. Dean?
What would guide my budget decisions? Well, Tim said, we have the comprehensive plan. We also have a housing action plan that's on the Ironwood's city website. And, you know, from what Ms. Corpy said, listen to the citizens. We hold workshops. We've had input from the citizens on the comprehensive action plan and the housing action plan. Hold some more workshops, listen to the people, invite them to come in and tell us what, what would you like to see? Use those discussions to guide our budget decisions as well.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Now I think we're moving to Ms. Corpy for this one. Next question, how can we continue to redevelop our downtown? How can we continue to redevelop our downtown? I think I read that wrong the first time, so I'm gonna do it one more time. How can we continue to redevelop our downtown?
Okay. All right, I think that working with the DIDA and like Ms. Corpy said, having shovel-ready projects. There's a bunch of different things that we're trying to do. We're trying to get housing downtown. We, like I already said earlier, I think that getting, making it more attractive for businesses to move into downtown. I'm a local business owner. I tried to purchase a downtown business that was vacant. I was told no, that they would never sell, that they would never work with me. So things like that are hard to see, you know? You want to have a vibrant downtown community with people coming and going and spending money. You know, going out to eat and living down there and having the whole community center down there. And I think that the DIDA is doing a great job. And like we said, the shovel-ready projects, getting grants and keeping Ironwood beautiful. They're doing a great job bringing energy into it.
Thank you, Ms. Corpy. Ms. Villas?
Sure. So, yeah, working with the chamber, working with the planning commission, working with the DIDA, that's all important. And I think that, that needs to, to continue. And I think the city's done a really nice job revitalizing the downtown. I mean, it's fun to be downtown. But I also think more obviously can be done. There's still some, you know, some vacant buildings. There's still some properties that could be turned into something. What incentives could we come up with? One way to address that, of course, is through, you know, various grants and other opportunities. Additionally, I go to Rigoni's on Sundays because they're open on Sundays. And I think that's a big part of something. I think, you know, there are incentives to get other businesses to open their doors more than between the hours of eight and five, Monday through, you know, Friday, and having some hours on Saturday. There's a lot of people coming in Ironwood. This Sunday, I was walking downtown, again, to get my pasty at Rigoni's, and sure enough, they were busy. And there were still a lot of people trying to, you know, mingle through the downtown. So can we make, can we get incentives to do that? And I think that'll help revitalize the downtown.
Thank you, Ms. Villas. Mr. Mildred?
Sure. Well, you, well, you start out, you have to, you have to have a great website set up so that when people are interested in this town, there's some ready information for them. Another thing is that as Ironwood improves its infrastructure, as people move, more businesses have been coming to our town, you, you have to have, you have to have festivals, you have to have music, you have to have events that match what you're doing, so that you keep, you keep people active, you keep people coming here, and you increase the amount of fun they have. You know, when Sisu started, whatever that was, ten, twelve years ago, for example, there are people in, in Wausau, in Monaca, in all the way down the line throughout Wisconsin, that never, have never seen Ironwood's main street. And Sisu started and all of a sudden, all of these people are skiing down our main street. And they say, this is one wonderful town. And they come and they invest and they grow here. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Mildred. Ms. Oliver Eigel?
I think that we have done a great job with helping to revitalize our downtown, and it does continue. It is going to be a slow and steady process. You can't do anything overnight. And being that I've grown up here, seeing things come and leave and things, we continue to move in that direction. I think that grants and encouraging other businesses to come in is a great idea. I agree with Mr. List trying to, you know, have people open on weekends where that is where, you know, our touristy people are going to be coming to town and when we can try to encourage them to be a part of our community. I also think that finding out why things like a hotel downtown or things like that haven't been able to work and getting a better understanding of some of the inner workings of our city is what I'm also looking to help do as a city commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Eigel. Mr. Rauch?
All right. Downtown revitalization is a priority of mine. I am on the other side of the coin. I think there's only so much that we can do as a community of this size. Relying on government and government grants and all of that to revitalize downtown. I find that downtown is half vacant. I believe that there's a lot we can do down there. Why aren't we rezoning it so we make it more interesting for other businesses to go there? I tried to open two businesses downtown. It didn't work because it doesn't fit the zoning model. So let's take a look at what we can do downtown regarding zoning and managing the businesses. And let's look at businesses that we can partner with that would be interested in coming downtown. Through my current operation, what I had with my store, we had a thousand people through the store on Sunday. Hundred and seventy-five of them were from out of town on Sunday alone. So let's make opportunities for businesses to grow downtown and let's bring opportunities for customers to come through the businesses downtown.
Thank you, Mr. Rauch. Mr. Stenstrom?
It seems like the problem is how do you get the people who are on Highway Two to venture into downtown? And I think we lost the opportunity when we were doing the licenses for the marijuana. There should have been a license for downtown. That way, people maybe get out of the cars and explore the area, eat at the restaurants. I thought we missed a great opportunity, again, to introduce downtown to the rest of our our travelers, get a feeling and an idea how, how nice our downtown is with the Ironwood Theater and the small businesses. And some things have improved at the, at the west end of town, the bodega and the ownership of the, of the midway bar. And I'd like to see more of that, you know, more people out at night, you know, make people feel comfortable.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Stenstrom. Ms. Corpy?
Redevelopment downtown, we've done a lot of placemaking strategies. You may not think that flower baskets and banners make a difference. We have a park down there, we have events down there. You build it, they will come, and we wanna make our downtown feel welcoming. So we've done, I think, decent with that. Right now, we do have like a TIF program in place. So the TIF program will allow us to have a little couple of extra dollars. So part of this, what we could do is rehab buildings, and to rehab buildings, it's expensive, expensive. So we need to take a look at one of the buildings downtown. What can we do with it? You know, can we set it up to be an incubator business? So small businesses that have a place to start and then grow. Or we have to take a look at housing. You know, people wanna be able to live downtown. I wanna have the walkability where I can go to the store. I can go to the theater, I can go to the park. So those are the some things that we could do. Is just first take a look at rehabbing some of our buildings so they're not sitting vacant. But also to have, promote businesses, is just have a welcoming plan. Here, come to the city. Here's some phone numbers. Here's some contacts. Let's help you get things going.
Thank you, Ms. Corpy. Mr. Dean?
The city's done some great things. One is the downtown park, which was a great idea, and it turned out to be a wonderful idea. Offer incentives to business owners to open businesses downtown, tax incentives. Make some new regulation to make it easier to build affordable housing and rehab current empty buildings. Those are some, and some of the ideas talked about here, you know, are really good ideas.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Mr. Frank?
Code enforcement, code enforcement, code enforcement. We have at least fifty vacant storefronts in our downtown. Almost none of them are fit for immediate occupancy. We have two buildings with collapsed roofs. We have multiple others that are open to the elements and that are infested with pigeons. We also, we also have to stop the tax auction merry-go-round. We have an out-of-town speculator purchases crappy property. They do nothing about it. Three years later, it's up on the tax auction again. Wash, rinse, and repeat. And finally, apartment rehab. If we rehab the apartments, that helps get rid of the pigeons. Provides housing, it's much needed, and in the process, you're doing a lot of rehab to the buildings, roofs, windows, heating, all of that. So you can have a business occupy the space.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. And I think Mr. List is up next. Your responsibility is to make decisions that affect residents' lives and taxpayer dollars. What specific steps will you take to verify information as it comes to you and ensure your votes are grounded in evidence? One question, I'll read it one more time.
Yes, thank you.
Your responsibility is to make decisions that affect residents' lives and taxpayer dollars. What specific steps will you take to verify information as it comes to you and ensure your votes are grounded in evidence?
So, good question, tough question. Thinking about, you know, where that information is coming from. I mean, the world I live in, in higher education, I mean, evidence-based practice and assessment, the work that I do, you know, so verification is essential. I, you know, would, I, I think these are times where you have an opportunity to meet with your city leads, your city heads, water department, obviously the city manager, to verify information. Additionally, I'd be interested to see how, you know, I, I've always appreciated the survey information that the city sends out and be able to respond to that, the information we get from residents. Using that as a guide for, from the residents itself. Working again with department heads, working together collectively as a planning commission to work to verify information, to ensure that we're making some evidence-based practices as well.
Thank you, Mr. List. Mr. Mildred?
Well, thank you. Specific steps? Well, I consider myself extremely well-informed. I probably read four or five of the leading newspapers in the, in the country. I rely on a city staff that, that is as top-notch as they can be. And, and I try to make, I try to make decisions with, with a little bit of my heart in there too, so that I, I, I feel empathy towards people. It's, 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 yeah, that, that's it in a nutshell. Try to, try to make good decisions and use my heart and my head.
Thank you, Mr. Mildred. Ms. Oliver Eigel?
I think that I could agree both with the first two candidates. It's just that the evidence-based practice and, and digging deeper into finding out, there's always two sides of a story, right? So there's always the other information that needs to be found. And is there talking to people and finding out what both sides of that story might be? Reading different documents that might be used when we get something through the city commission. I'm sure that, you know, there might be times where it's a rather long or deep information and taking the time to actually read through it and check where that information comes from, things like that. I think just being diligent on the fact-checking, I guess, and having a confidence in the information that you're receiving.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Eigel. Mr. Rauch?
All right, so the, the topic's around decision-making and how it impacts life and money. All right, well, there's another arm to that, time. All right, so there's, what, what are we, what are we looking at? We're looking at helping manage time, people, and money, right? So priorities, right? Priorities is first. So in order to make decisions, we need to prioritize what are the top things that are doing. And then as we're hearing from other candidates, let's look at budgets, let's look at impacts on lives, and let's prioritize the work. So this is gonna require additional efforts in, or in the form of verification. We have committees, right? Let's look at some work. We're talking about surveys, we're talking about a number of other things. So there's opportunity for us to get different sources of information that we can come up and make educated decisions on.
Thank you, Mr. Rauch. Mr. Stenstrom?
Well, I find riding a bicycle around town gives me a lot of information. And I see a lot of things going on compared to just riding around in the car. Of course, I had a curious mind and always liked the plant gardens, my mind, in a way of getting my my two cents or my or my my curiosity's going. I think that's how I can really aid as being the city commissioner just in the way I do things and my curiosity. I'm up and about, throwing my mount on my bicycle and I see a lot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stenstrom. Ms. Corpy?
Votes grounded in evidence. To me, the, I keep going back to the comprehensive plan. Um, votes grounded in evidence, to me, the, I keep going back to the comprehensive plans, the studies will be done. It's what the people want, so it's kind of our roadmap where to go. But just, our first step is really just to listen objectively to the people and with an open mind, like what do you want, what do you hear, what, what is going on? And then go to the sources, work with our city staff. There, there's a lot of good staff out there, there's a lot of good committees out there. And do the research yourself, you know, part of being a commissioner is, you know, finding out what's happening out in other communities. Like the Michigan Municipal League is a, a great resource, they're a resource out of Lansing that work with many, many small towns. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can go to these folks and say, hey, have you ever had this problem? How can you get things going? How can you keep us going? But I think the first step is just to listen objectively and check out and do our research and take advantage of our, our staff and our committees.
Thanks, Ms. Corpin, Mr. Dean.
Uh, that's what I did for a lot of my career was uh, research to verify the information I was receiving was based on evidence. So it's kind of second nature, I rely on the city staff. Fact-checking, uh, research, government sources, um, and uh, Google, believe it or not, so.
Thank you, Mr. Dean, Mr. Frank. I mean, it's almost impossible to talk about sources without knowing what the question is, what the project is or whatever. But what I've noticed is that too often the city of Ironwood, they do a project, often very expensive projects. And then after it, they declared a, a success. Because obviously it's a success and that's, that's the wrong way of doing things. Anytime that you are doing a project, step one, you specify a goal. Step two, you're going to specify a metric to measure the outcomes. Then you're going to do that project, you're going to collect your data, and then you're going to analyze that data and see if you have met what your, your goals were.
So, thank you, Mr. Frank, Ms. Corpin.
Um, I rely heavily on city staff. As a first-term commissioner, I had a lot of questions and there was a lot of things that I didn't understand going into it. And um, city staff has always taken the time to explain things. I rely heavily on their expertise and um the committees that make decisions that guide the direction of the civic center or the downtown or the theater. Um, you can't have your hand in everything and you have to trust the people and the citizens are making the right decisions. So I try and rely a lot on those things and all the supplemental information from our qualified city officials and our city staff um, really helps guide my decisions.
Thank you, Ms. Corpin. And now we move to Mr. Mildred.
Correct.
All right. How will you ensure city services are delivered fairly across all neighborhoods? How will you ensure city services are delivered fairly across all neighborhoods?
Well, I think as commissioners, we've done, done a really good job of that. Um, with, with, with the recent um water and sewer, for example, and street projects. So, so it's been a step-by-step thing, you know, so step one, steps two, step three. Each one of those is, is, is uh, uh, three, four, or five blocks. And, and that, and, and fixing those streets and sewer and water can, can range anywhere from three to ten million dollars. You can't do it all at once, so you do it in steps. And you start out with an evidence-based approach where the worst streets, the worst sewers, the worst are here. So you, you, you don't, you don't look at who lives where, you don't look at whatever, you look at where the services are the worst. Fix those and then you go on to the next one, then you go on to the next one. And then somewhere down the line, you're gonna have all of those streets, all of those sewer and all of that water repaired. So it's, it's, it's a, it's um, the roads are raided, sewers are raided, streets are raided.
Excellent, thank you, Ms. Mildred, Ms. Oliver Eigel.
I firmly believe as a special education teacher that what is fair is not always equal and what is equal is not always fair. And that sometimes the need base is going to be where the um, resources are allocating. And so I think that to say that, you know, to make sure that the city services are offered fairly, um, I mean, I think that's very subjective as far as what is fair. And so the need um and having a detailed input on what that need is, is going to be uh important in making those decisions. Because is like Mr. Mildred was saying, is that if it's severe in one area and it's not in the other, yes, that area might get that service first. And so sometimes just as a community, you have to be willing to be in it for the long haul and take the good with the bad.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Eigel, Mr. Ralph.
Yes, all right, city services barely amongst the entire neighborhoods. All right, well, first of all, the objective, you know, you find out what the scope of the project is, right? And let's, let's apply an eighty-twenty rule. Where's eighty percent of this going to get us the biggest bang for the buck at the soonest time we can? Again, managing time, people and money, right? And we have demographics and uh, how do we apply the time, those people and the money in order to accommodate an eighty percent accomplishment? Uh, success, you're never going to make everyone happy on everything. It's not going to happen, it doesn't happen, it will never happen. So the objective is to find out what is the core and then how to uh, give the biggest bang for the buck and uh come up with an eighty-twenty rule, managing time, people and money across the entire project and scope.
Thank you, Mr. Ralph, Mr. Stentrum.
Yes, I found with all the road construction in town, um, with the city services, uh, don't seem to wish to um, use their street sweepers to uh clean up the messes from the uh from Jake's excavation. I've had many times where I have gravel all over May Street and sand and things like that. And it seems like it's never taken care of. And last week, there was a lot of work done on Lake Street. I guess one of the uh main um water lines broke and uh it was such a mess and I still don't see any street cleaning going on. And that's sort of a business district there, people don't want to get all their cars and get their, their shoes muddied or whatever, tracked into their cars. And I really don't know how to even call up the uh city services to have that even done. Or will they actually uh respond to that request?
Thank you, Mr. Stentrum, Ms. Corpin.
Um, I take a look at the services that we're providing, take a look at the water and sewer, I think we had a systematic approach to what we're doing. But I think you have to take a look at uh measuring impact, where are you going to have the most impact? Uh, just for an example, like Douglas Boulevard, it's our corridor into our downtown. So you may see that area have a little bit more of the decorative lighting, uh, you might have some grants out there for people to fix up their homes or their sidings, other roofs or their facade, facades on their buildings out there. So it may not be a fair distribution to do that in other communities or parts of the city, but our corridor to our downtown. So it may not be fair, but we have to take a look at the impact. And even like our new areas, if you're over in Michigan and Argent, that way, they're doing a lot, a lot of work out there. And they're taking the time to put in sidewalks and sidewalks on both sides. So it gives us a um, something that we can showcase in our investment and these are sidewalks are going to be highly used versus like my neighborhood. I don't have much going on, I probably don't need as many sidewalks out there, but we have to take a look at impact.
Thank you, Ms. Corpin, uh, Mr. Dean.
Okay, in my term as city attorney, I've never seen the city uh treat anyone unfairly. Um, but how to ensure that services are delivered fairly, I think it's need-based for starters. I mean, if somebody's got, if the street collapses, I'm, I'm, you're not, you need to go and fix that one. And uh, but it evens out in the long run, like they're doing now with this, with the, they're doing uh Coolidge and Farge and Irving and so forth, it does even on, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Dean, Mr. Frank.
Well, how I would do this, I'm not afraid to open my mouth. So trust me, if I'm on the city commission, I see a problem, I'm going to bring it up. But I can certainly give you some examples of where services neighborhoods are not treated equally. Nori, especially right at the top of the hill there, is largely ignored. In part, it's treated as a dumping ground by the city itself. We didn't get all the new sidewalks when we had water and sewer replaced that, that all the other neighborhoods did. Uh, there are certain blocks of our downtown that are ignored. They don't get benches, they don't get flowers, they don't get a lot of code enforcement, they're ignored. And Jessiville, I think it is an absolute sin that Jessiville does not have playground. And that needs to be remedied immediately, so.
Thank you, Mr. Frank, Ms. Corpin.
Um, I think projects need to be determined by need, the highest concentration of residents and the biggest impact that we can do. Um, and also, like they said, working, uh, looking at the water and sewer or street ratings and the highest need, obviously, if we have a water line that keeps failing and failing and failing. Um, the digging it up over and over and over again and having those residents out of water on repeat in the middle of the winter and things like that, it's not ideal. So, you know, even if it's in a high concentration neighborhood that you think already got some service, if they're having their water service disrupted multiple times, they could have the highest need. So I think, you know, grants help and need-based rankings.
Thank you, Ms. Corpin, Mr. List.
Right, and just, you know, obviously basing it off of what's, you know, essential services and needs. Where do we, where is the um most, you know, where, where the improvements needed the most? And starting that, um, using that as a guide. But a lot of this stems, of course, I believe from, you know, uh, it's, it's planning, strategic planning. Um, did, you know, working together to develop a plan to, to determine which areas do need to be addressed. What's going to have the greatest impact on residents? Having those conversations with, you know, uh, city staff, the commissioners uh themselves and making that decision that way. Um, and I, I think a lot of that comes from, you know, what is, you know, what is the guiding principle that we have as commissioners? You know, to support our residents, to be there for our residents and to improve the city and help revitalize it. So using that as your mission, so to speak, and working your way down uh with needs, uh, with that need assessment in mind uh, can help, you know, make sure that you're doing things equitably.
Thank you, Ms. List. Okay, Ms. Oliver Eigel, also, seems like they're all getting long, so. I'll read slow and repeat.
Okay.
Ironwood residents come from a range of backgrounds, racial, religious, economic and cultural. Can you describe a time when you advocated for a resident or a group whose needs were different from your own? What did you learn? And how will this shape your decisions as a commissioner? Ironwood residents come from a range of backgrounds, racial, religious, economic and cultural. Can you describe a time when you advocated for a resident or a group whose needs were different from your own? What did you learn and how will that shape your decisions as a commissioner?
So I would say that um our community needs to be accepting. Um, however, that is of all, right? And not just one specific group, not one specific person, not one specific area, it needs to be all in general. I think that I have worked with individuals with developmental disabilities uh a lot throughout my career. Uh, first as a social worker and then as a teacher. And so advocating for the accessibility and uh making sure that the needs are there or that the um facilities are there for those that need. Um, I think that making sure that we are in a acceptance for all and not, like I said, not just one specific group, uh, would really be how I would try to focus my choices and decision-making.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Eigel, Mr. Ralph.
Okay, all right. Um, different needs and how do we have, how would I advocate for different groups with different needs? All right, um, I'll go back to the concept of it's a business, right? You have different types of people, different sexes, different races, different everything in a business environment. So how do we, how do we make that a nice uh cohesive environment for all people to be successful and to be able to work together? So I will bring to the table an experience of twenty-five years working in corporate America at uh executive level positions where you have um, um HR, where you have all of these issues and all these things. And how do we all play collectively together and support the needs of everyone and provide a uh safe, comfortable, uh, living environment for all?
Thank you, Mr. Ralph, Mr. Stentrum.
Yeah, I grew up in a town that was integrated since the sixties. So in the way of uh of having any sort of precious ideas about uh people, I really don't have much of. Sometimes it seems like to help somebody uh with a uh, an issue like that, uh it just seems to uh, being part of city commission is trying to uh resolve those sort of uh uh interracial and uh issues uh by talking about them. And uh, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Stentrum, Ms. Corpin.
In my prior job, they, they had a lot of focus on diversity. If we were all monochromatic, it'd be pretty, pretty boring. So diversity is important, that you can recognize the views and interests of other people. Uh, I can share a story, I went to Northland College back in the day and I remember talking to somebody and sometimes I can be kind of intense when I look at people. And I remember talking to a, a Native American person and it was brought to my attention that me staring them in the eyes while I was talking to them was very, very rude. So it was a cultural thing that I didn't know about, something I had to learn. So it made me try to check myself and learn about myself on how I communicate. So I try to gauge people that I work with, um, that I talk to, what their needs are and kind of gauge how I communicate just off of that kind of one experience.
Thanks, Ms. Corpin, Mr. Dean.
When I first started to practice law, I was a grown man uh in the firm, so I got all the indigent criminal cases. And I met all kinds of people from different walks of life and uh different backgrounds in mind and uh, but I believe in act equal, um, access to justice for all. And that everybody deserves an offense. Uh, and uh, I guided my uh bat at uh that way.
Thank you, Mr. Dean, Mr. Frank.
We re-.
Yes. Ironwood residents come from a range of backgrounds, racial, religious, economic and cultural. Can you describe a time when you advocated for a resident or group whose needs were different from your own? What did you learn and how will that shape your decisions as a commissioner?
I mean, I see the intent of the question, but I also find it kind of crass. Could I give examples? Sure, but I, no, that's I've been a tutor for well over twenty years. I've helped people. I've, I've never helped a black student, I've never helped a gay student. I have helped a student who has a question and somebody who needs help. And, and so the, the, the city commission is supposed to be doing things, I mean, obviously for, for, for everybody. That's, I mean, I'm not going to draw out my answer more, more than that. You help people who need help, that, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Frank, Ms. Corpin.
Um, I agree with that, um, there's, I have one example. Um, I'm a school teacher and I like to take a lot of trips with my kids and expose them to different things in our area. And lots of times, the school district says, we can't pay for that. You need to have the kids pay ten dollars each or fifteen dollars each. I have students who can't support that economic need. So I try to look for opportunities where I can write grants that fund these opportunities. So our kids who have that need and can't support that um price that they need to pay for the trip can still go and still experience our area and still see all of these things that, you know, later on in life, when they have their own transportation, it's going to be a free thing for them, like you can drive to Copper Peak and you can go for a hike and you can see our waterfalls and you can see how beautiful this area is. And um, I try and just make opportunities accessible for people of all economic needs in that way.
Thank you, Ms. Corpin, Mr. List.
Sure, one of the, you know, benefits of gathering signatures uh to be in this position right now is had the opportunity to talk to a lot of people in my neighborhoods. Um, and through that, I had the opportunity to, you know, learn about their needs, expectations. Um, and it was a really good experience overall. Through that, I was able to advocate for some people to help to get them some jobs through the area, um, gave them leads, et cetera. But I think that's important to, as a community, and that's one of the areas I want us to continue is this, this idea of being, being inclusive um, versus being exclusive. I know right now today, there's a lot of conversations about DEI, the buzzword that, you know, still is, you know, draws a lot of ire. Uh, nonetheless, I mean, you think about what's the opposite of diversity, it's uniformity, uh, equity and equity and obviously inclusion, you know, not being inclusive. So I think it's uh being exclusive, excuse me. So I think it's important as commissioners that we, we value that still. Um, and treat people equitable and, and work with uh, you know, bringing other residents in for that reasons.
Thank you, Mr. List, Mr. Mildred.
Sure, so um, probably about twenty years ago or so, there were some of the people in the room and, and myself, um, we realized, people in education, people that, that, that work with civic organizations trying to help, we realized that children in our area didn't feel valued. And to substantiate that, we hired the search institute and they came in and they have a thing about forty assets. There's positive assets, do you feel safe? Uh, there's negative assets, is there too much alcohol or are there too many drugs? So, so they, they, they surveyed all of the kids in Goguic and Ogden County and the phone that it was So, so they, they, they surveyed all of the kids in Goullick and Ogden County on the phone that it was true. That kids didn't feel like they were valued there. And so we started a program. With the help of the intermediate going through all of the schools and, and. Having young people realize what really is important, what we're going to try to do. Personally, then. I started sadness headquarters because I thought if we can give children Christmas. And we can give children toys and we can put food on their table and they think it's coming from their parents. They're going to value themselves and they're going to value the community.
Thank you, Mr. Milgan.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we are now to Mr. Ralph. Uh for next question. A local newspaper publishes the names of residents who signed a petition to remove a controversial book from the public library. Some signers say they now fear retaliation. How would you defend the press's right to publish or protect the petitioner's right to engage anonymously? Read it one more time.
Yes.
A local newspaper publishes the names of residents. Who signed a petition to remove a controversial book from the public library. Some signers say they now fear retaliation. How would you defend the press's right to publish? Or protect the petitioner's right to engage anonymously?
Freedom of speech, right? Um, all right. Yeah, no, that's, that's interesting. All right. So. There's two sides of the equation, right? So there's those who um feel strongly about uh. A and there's those who feel strongly about B. So how do you bring that together, right? Um there's got to be some type of. Uh the press is free to print what the press is free to print and people are free to think what they are uh thinking. So how do we bring that together in some type of forum or some type of uh communication on that? So my response is, how do we re-engage and look at um why was this such a? Uh rub for you personally and why was this an issue for you? And with the press and all that stuff, I mean, it's not going to be a simple. You were wrong, you were right type of thing. It's going to be more engaged where you need to continue the conversation. And continue um so that people can see both sides of the argument.
Thank you, Mr. Ralph. Mr. Stentrum?
Well, we live in the age of the internet. It seems like we can get enough information um. Uh through, through that alone, we don't have to have printed books in uh in our. In our public libraries or in our, or in our schools. Um to uh. To get that information. Or, or, or those stories. Um. So I think of uh. When you talk about uh. How to. Help these people who sign the petition and then protect the newspaper who, who uh, who uh printed it. Uh it's still, again, uh, uh, a thing of freedom of speech.
Thank you, Mr. Stentrum. Uh Ms. Corpey?
Just repeat the question one more time.
Sure. A local newspaper publishes the names of residents who signed a petition to remove a controversial book from the public library. Some signers say they now fear retaliation. How would you defend the press's right to publish or protect the petitioner's right to engage anonymously?
I just find that a kind of a difficult question because as a city commissioner, I don't think it's. It's my position to tell the newspaper what to write and when to write and, and what to cover. Uh my opinion is like from the city standpoint, we report our facts and if the facts reach the paper, they're incorrect. Then we make a point of trying to correct the facts and, and go from there. But as a commissioner, I don't feel like I can tell. The, the Globe or any other paper what and how to write.
Thank you, Ms. Corcoran. Mr. Dean?
I agree with Kim. This isn't really a city commission issue. It's between the, the newspaper and their, and its readers.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Mr. Frank?
Yeah, I'm tempted to just say I agree with these two. But when have I been afraid to open my mouth, right? I mean, I just wanna. So people signed a public petition, which I assume they turned over to some public official, a librarian or whatever. There, there's no privacy involved ri- right there. I mean, nobody's hacking into, I, whatever. And if it's about a book in a public library, then obviously that's newsworthy. You would. Hope your local newspaper would be publishing local newsworthy stories. So I, I just, I don't. I, it's kind of a bizarre question to be honest. And the, the whole safety thing. Honestly, I'm tired. I think people keep saying they're unsafe, they're unsafe. We, we've lost all meaning of what that word truly means. If there is a legitimate threat, of course, that should be reported to the police department. Police should, should investigate and enforce our laws again for, for everyone.
So. Thank you, Mr. Frank. Ms. Corpey?
I'm also tempted to say I agree. I do agree. Um I don't think as a commissioner, it's our right to tell the paper what to print. And if you're signing a public petition. It's a public petition. It's not a private petition and you're putting your name on there. I do think that having respectful and empathetic conversations with those people who are fearful for their safety and directing them to public safety. Is what we need to do, but I also think it's not our job as commissioners to engage in this type of thing.
Thank you, Ms. Corpey. Mr. List?
Sure. And, and there's so many facets of this question that lend itself to the democratic process itself, you know, starting with the petition to have something removed, you know. Um that is part of, I think, our democracy, being able to do that. And I think that's important. The newspaper having the right to, you know, publish those names. Again, you know, I'm a big proponent of free speech. And freedom of the press as a former newspaper writer. Um I, I see the benefits of that. But I think, you know, again, yes, I agree also. What is the city's role, was a commissioner's role? Um to not, you know, you know, help and, you know, ensure that, you know, safety. However you want to frame it, the, the petitioner is not, they're feeling unsafe. I think there's a way to, to help um alleviate that by. Um, you know, again, a- as uh Ms. Corpey had mentioned, talking to the person, directing them to the right areas. Um and to make sure that, you know, they, they do, they do feel safe. Um and I think that is, that's important. Um but again, not getting involved in that process itself. But under, I think it undermined the di- uh democratic process, so.
Thank you, Mr. List. Mr. Milgan?
Yeah, asked and answered by all of them. I support freedom of the press. I, I hate to see censorship. I, I, I would never want people lining up and saying, let's burn this book. Or let's pull this off our shelves because I hate that kind of behavior. And I also hate people that are rude and don't respect other people. So just throw that all together and see what, see what hits the wall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Milgan. Um, Ms. Oliver Eigel?
Yeah, I think this is the worst question to be last on because I should just say ditto to everybody. Um. But I agree that as a city commissioner, I don't understand what the role of um our job would be in this question. Um I do think that, you know, there's kind of that uh understood, like it's a public petition, that yes, your name could be public and. Um then, but also uh that we kind of have this culture of. I'm right and you're wrong. And if you don't agree with me, then you're wronger. And um that's not what I would like to see as a community um for our views. So. I do agree, having empathetic conversation about um safety is definitely a concern, but also. Where has that word gone? And I do agree with that too, is that uh we throw a lot of words around as. Words and uh we do lose the meaning behind it. Um and really, we have to just kind of come down to earth and. We are all entitled to our own opinions.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Eigel. Now I think we're going to Mr. Stentrum for this next question. How do you feel about the city requiring any officer, local, state, or federal? To clearly identify themselves when interacting with somebody in Ironwood? How do you feel about the city requiring any officer, local, state, or federal? To clearly identify themselves when interacting with somebody in Ironwood?
I think that's very important because these officers do carry weapons. Uh they have a. Pretty free reign of uh arresting you on all sorts of of. Um things that may uh interact between you and the officer. Um and knowing the name, you know, just lets you uh, you know, sign a complaint. And I guess leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Stentrum. Ms. Corcoran?
You repeat one more time, please.
How do you feel about the city requiring any officer, local, state, or federal? To clearly identify themselves when interacting with someone in Ironwood?
I, I think that is a, a safe measure, you know, identifying who you are. And uh it might create a little bit of um clarification of purpose, what you're there for. Who you are and maybe what the end results are desired. So I think it is a safety feature.
Thank you, Ms. Corcoran. Mr. Dean?
Yeah, I think it's fine. I think they have to identify themselves. Um. But your question extends to uh federal officers. I don't know what the law is on that, but I mean, if the city ordinance. Uh. There's tension between, between the city ordinance and maybe a federal law. That uh the city can't uh trump. Uh. So, you know. Whether we can do that to a federal officer, I don't know. Is, is that a good idea? Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Mr. Frank?
Again, the city has absolutely no ability to influence the state or, or, or the feds. So doesn't matter what I think about any of that. On a local level, yeah, obviously, absolutely. Police officers should be clearly identifiable by, by their name. They should not be wearing masks, all of that. And I'll take it one step further. Ironwood Public Safety Vehicle should be clearly marked. If you want to have an, if you are doing a truly an undercover operation, then fine, have a special vehicle that is used for an undercover operation. But if you are out doing basic road patrol, then that vehicle should be clearly marked, not some of the stealth vehicles that we kind of have.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Ms. Corpey?
I think as a safety and transparency issue, it's a good thing to have them identify themselves.
Thank you, Ms. Corpey. Mr. List?
And I will agree with everyone here that that's a necessary rule to have, necessary law. Whether you can enforce it on the state or federal level, you know, likely not. Uh nonetheless, officers should be, can identify themselves. Um as, I know there's been some concern recently with impersonations of officers and those sort of challenges at various levels. So it's very important to have that on place.
Thank you, Mr. List. Mr. Milgan?
Sure. I'd agree. Yes, the clearly identifying yourself. I mean, I love as a, as a person that's getting. Somewhere's around seventy-something, right? I like when people wear name tags. Wow. I feel comfortable in here. So uh yes, please, identify yourself.
Thank you, Mr. Milgan. Ms. Oliver Eigel?
I would say that I, it's a hard question because I think that it's based on the situation. Um I think that, you know, there are some times where undercover operations and things like that might be necessary and. I'm very thankful for a lot of the work that our giant team has done in our community in being able to help get some of these. Um illegal drugs and things like that out of our community. I have a family and I really appreciate the work that they do. And so, hey, hi, I'm an officer, I'm coming to bust your operation, really doesn't sound like a great plan. Um but also there's common sense with it as well, like, you know, are they an off-duty officer? Are they an on-duty officer? Like. Yes, if I'm knocking on your door, I need to identify myself with a badge and say, you know, like, this is why I'm here. Um but at the same time, I think that we have very qualified police officers and that they. Understand when and where they need to identify themselves.
Thank you, uh Ms. Oliver Eigel. And Ms. Ralph?
All right, um similar in the sense that, you know, police should always be identifying themselves. But it's situational as when, right? To your comment. Um banging out a bus, a, a drug bust on a girl house, probably knocking on the door, hey, I'm Officer Ralph here to take a look at your basement. Um, you know, so it's situational. They always need to be identifiable and they are professional. They wear their badges. They wear cameras now. And uh all of that. So I mean, um trust, but verify, right? Trust that they will do the right things at the right times, but give them the opportunity to execute what their situational situation is.
Okay, I think we're back with Ms. Corcoran for the next question. Uh we've talked quite a bit about blight. It's come up a few times. And I think this is a follow-up. What do you know about Ironwood's ordinance addressing blight? And how do you plan to use that knowledge? What do you know about Ironwood's, Ironwood's ordinance addressing blight? And how do you plan to use that knowledge?
I guess just the best way that I can use the knowledge is to be able to explain how the process works. It, I'd. Love if we could do things faster, but the process is, you know, that the public safety are out there patrolling their neighborhood, so they develop a relationship with the. The, the neighborhood folks and then talk to them about, this is good, this is bad, this is what you need to change. And then after a while, they come to the commission and then uh they may make progress. And if they don't make progress, then they come to that commission again and then we take action. Um if the city has to take action, then again, the, the bill may be put onto their, their tax roll. So just having the knowledge of kind of how it works to be able to explain it to it. Um I know the city um. Uh police officers, they work with the city staff and light officers. And I said, it's a, it's a process. It takes a bit. I wish it could be faster, but it gives people the opportunity to make corrections.
Thank you, Ms. Corcoran. Mr. Dean?
No, um. Blight uh enforcement is not about punishment. It's about compliance. And if somebody can comply, and it takes them a little longer to comply, um that's the way to go about it, rather than uh punish them right up front. And to not give them, you know, a couple of chances to fix the problem. Because the way I view it, uh. If you comply with the ordinance and it takes a few, takes a few months to do that, better to have compliance than punish them because it gets job done.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Mr. Frank?
What do I know about our blight ordinance? I know everything about Ironwood's blight ordinance and I know everything about where all blight is in, in Ironwood. The, the current system is, is absolutely ridiculous. We have overly complicated it. Most of what we're talking about is like junk and garbage. Okay, we're sending out one notice and we send out a second notice with a little fee attached. We send out a third notice with a bigger fee. Then we have a public hearing. Who's coming into a public hearing that's going to say, hey, please don't clean up the, the neighbor's junk pile next to me. I love it. It, it, it's a ridiculous process. And then the commission will invariably give them a couple more weeks because they're sort of making progress or whatever. One notice, seven days, if you don't clean it up in that time, the city comes in, cleans it up and charges you the end. That might sound harsh. I understand that. I'm kind of fatigued on seeing all the blight that is around. When you talk, start, start talking about houses and buildings and that, it gets a bit more complicated. A big part of that is stopping again, that tax auction narrative around.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Ms. Corpey?
Um I agree that the blight process needs to be expedited. It is quite long. Uh when I got on the commission, I didn't really realize that you needed so many notices. You need so many days in between. Um and I do think that the. Officers who have the neighborhood patrol, I think it's going, it seems like we had a lot more coming through this year and a lot more people. Doing the right thing and cleaning up their own junk and not having to rely on the city funds to have people come in and clean it up for them. And, you know, that just gets put on their tax bill and they don't pay their taxes and it goes to the city very much. So. I just think that working with residents, building that relationship with your neighbors and with the other residents, trying to get you to like. Do the right thing. Hey, buddy, like, do you need some help? I don't know. Are you falling on hard times? It's just, you know, it is a lot of fatigue and it is hard. And I do wish it was faster and hopefully we can work on that. But I do think it's making progress.
Thank you, Ms. Corpey. Mr. List?
Sure. Yeah, the, the, the blight ordinance gives, you know, the process itself is long. Um it gives people a lot of opportunity, I want to say that. And there's some people who need the opportunity, either financially or obviously we have an aging population itself, so doing the work itself may take extra time. There are, I would like to see us find a way to identify how long after a first blight notice is sent out versus compliance or. Um some sort of penalties. Where, how long is it really taking for that overall in the last few years? And using that as a guide. Uh and I think that could give us a good opportunity to kind of take a look at where people are. You know, how much time they need financially. Um i- i- is it, is it, you know, breaking their finances? Um again, you know, it would be nice to have this done a little more quickly. Uh we all have seen paid homes and properties in our area. We like that it cleaned up. Nonetheless, I think we do have to give people the opportunity to rectify their situations before we uh ensure penalties.
Thank you, Mr. List. Mr. Milgan?
Sure. So I hate blight. I hate blight in our neighborhoods. I hate blight if, if it affects. Anyone's property values. It's hurt, it, it hurts people. It hurts our town. Um all of our blight ordinances though, as it's been explained to me, balance out the rights that a person has as a homeowner. Against our need to remove that light. And, and that, and therein lies the trickiest situation. We have people. In Ironwood, I think, are doing a good job with blight. They're, they're meeting with the people that, that, that have blight in their yards. And they're working out a plan and a lot of times they clean it up themselves and thank God for those people because they're trying to do the right thing. If they don't do the right thing, then I believe that um. We have to clean it up and if we have to clean it up, we charge them, charge them, charge them. And um the whole thing has to be fixed. So that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Milgan. Ms. Oliver Eigel?
I know absolutely nothing about our blight policies or anything like that. Um I do know that we have a lot of issues. I do know that we have a lot of issues that I would like to see addressed before I'm focused on blight. I think that some of that stuff probably happens, I think that being compassionate about other people and realizing what is their situation? Why is it happening? Are there community programs we could have where a group of high schoolers is going to go over and help to clean up that property? Right? If it's really that bad for the people in the neighborhood, is there a reason why? And is there a group that we could do so that people can help to get that cleaned up? I think that we forget to have compassion as people and realize that like, yeah, maybe my backyard is full of all the stuff. We do have the city cleanup days, so could we have, you know, groups or, or students, things like that, that could go and say? You know what? Maybe you can't get this cleaned up, so can I help with that? Laws are only for the people that follow them and those that don't, they're not going to anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Eigel. Mr. Roush?
All right.
Like, this is getting louder and louder, you guys. The more people I talk to, the more people I interact with, this is a top priority for many. To me, it's black and white. It's right or it's wrong, it's on or it's off. Yes, we need to review the processes and fix them, all right? And the, the compliance and compassion, okay. Well, we're talking tonight about economic development, we're talking about housing, we're talking about new businesses. We're talking about decreased population in the city. Why is that? I'll put blight as one of the attributes for us missing out on all of that. So I would take a firm action on getting that cleaned up. It's simple, it's simple, it's, it's. Educating them on this is what it is, this is what needs to happen, and then helping expedite to get it done.
Thank you, Mr. Roush. Mr. Stenstrom?
Yes, I've been blighted very badly this last year. I've been in an area that I had three houses. And I had many projects going on throughout the years. It's not much garbage or whatever. I did have vehicles that needed to be removed. And last, last December, a year ago, I started to talk to a caseworker. To help me formulate a way of getting rid of my blight. And it's now more of a, more of a thing of enforcement by the police department. And I found it very upsetting of how this whole blight thing goes. Where I come from, we have letters from our, our, it's more or less of a white collar type of situation. And then, and then it goes to a judge. And the judge is the one who decides. If you need more time or not, or if you have hardships or whatever. This does not happen here in Gogeta County.
Thank you, Mr. Stenstrom. I think we're back to Mr. Dean for the next question. If you vote with the minority on a given issue, will you support the majority decision? If you vote with the minority on a given issue, will you support the majority decision?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Dean, Mr. Frank.
Yes, that's how a democracy works.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Ms. Corpin? Thank you, Ms. Corpin, Mr. List.
Repeat what everyone else said.
Thank you. Yes, I will.
Ms. Oliver Eigel.
Absolutely. I think that, that is how the democracy works, right? And it is how we need to support each other in making these decisions. We can't just say, well, I didn't get my way, so now I'm going to throw a temper tantrum and, you know, ruin the other things that are going on. If that's how the majority votes, then that's how the majority feels and that's what we have to go with.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Eigel, Mr. Roush.
Yeah, supporting the majority is not an option not to. But if you have a strong difference of opinions, the ability to be able to express that opinion. And maybe look at a phase two or some other type of opportunity that could bring that type of additional. Attribute to the discussion. Why not?
Thank you, Mr. Roush, Mr. Stenstrom.
Repeat the question again.
If you vote with the minority on a given issue, will you support the majority decision?
You mean, play along with the rest of the group, as I say, to vote yes on something?
I, I can't interpret the question.
I believe I will have to really go into my conscious about that. Sort of situation. I would like to have some questions asked to go along with the majority.
Thank you, Mr. Stenstrom and Ms. Corpin.
Yes, I've, I've been in this position and I would definitely support, I respect the process and respect the opinions. And, and given Robert's rules of order and how things go, you can be on the, the losing end of a vote. But you also have the opportunity to voice your opinion, which may at another turn provide more information. Or open new doors, but yes, I would respect being on the minority side.
Thank you, Ms. Corpin. I think, Mr. Frank, we're back to you. Please describe your experience with employee unions and explain how that will help you work with city employees. Please describe your experience with employee unions and explain how that will help you work with city employees.
I, I have no, no experience with employee unions, but. I mean, I guess what we're getting at with the question is the negotiating process and all of that. So, I mean, my theory here. Our wages and benefits, they should be broadly the same across the region. Are we going to pay our city employees the same rate as a New York City employee? I mean, of course not. Are we going to pay them the same as a small town in Mississippi? Of course not. But we're obviously, we're going to look around our region. What, ballparking it, the Western U P over to Ashland, whatever. We want to make sure that we're, we're playing in the, in the right ballpark. That it's the fair thing to do, but that's also the way that you acquire and retain quality employees. So, negotiation should be fair. Basically, we want to pay a fair, fair wage for a fair day's work. But that, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Ms. Corpin?
I am a union employee at a school district and my experience, actually, last year I got to see both sides. We were in contract negotiations the same time as some city employees, so it's interesting to see both sides and see how it worked from each angle. And I think that that's really exactly what Mr. Frank said. You want to look around and you want to be able to retain the employees that you have and you want to be able to recruit new people. And you want them to come work for you and you want to have the good people stay. And make sure that it seems like it's a fair deal to them. You don't want anyone to feel like you're shortchanging them and you don't value them.
Thank you, Ms. Corpin, Mr. List.
Sure, I've had the opportunity to serve as a, a union lead for a faculty bargaining unit, as well as on the administrative side. So, I, I support collective bargaining. I see the benefits of interest-based bargaining. Where the employer will lay out, here's what we have and here's what we would like to achieve. And the, you know, the, the bargaining union will lay out, this is what we want. And I think, I think that is essential to making like a good working relationship between the city and its employees, to have that process in place. Because they, you know, it's, it's open, it's an open process. You know, somebody wants a raise. Here's what we can do and you work on it and you compromise. And there's a lot of that that goes on. That lends itself, I think, to good employee, employer relations throughout the, you know, the, the working relationship between. The employer and the employee by just having that interest-based bargaining as part of a process.
Thank you, Mr. List, Mr. Milver.
Repeat the question again, please.
Please describe your experience with employee unions and explain how that will help you work with city employees.
Okay. So, in most of my life, I've been a manager. And you always have to look at your business from that side of the coin. But, but I grew up in this town, I grew up in Ironwood and we had, we had the mines. And, and I believe that, that, from my heart, that it was the unions that brought safety to work. It was the unions that gave us forty-hour working weeks. It's, it was the unions that gave us paid vacations. There are so many things, because, because corporate America has one goal. The workers on the other side and there's always this give and take. And you absolutely need unions and I value them. So, that's how I feel about that.
Thank you, Mr. Milver. Ms. Oliver Eigel.
I also have been a union member. I think that I agree with what Mr. Milver had just said. Is that their origination is the fact that it is safety and fairness, equality. That nobody's trying to get an upper leg, that it's just trying to be fair across the board. So, I think that working with people, whether there's a union or not, there should just be that sense of equality. And trying to do what's best for everyone involved. And so, I think that making sure, obviously, when you work with unions, you do have to make sure that you're doing your due diligence. And making sure for documentation sorts and things like that. But as far as what our role as a city commissioner is, would be something that I would learn on the job, I guess. Because I do think they're important and just treating everyone with respect and equality would be the best.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Eigel. Mr. Roush?
Yes, twenty-five years in corporate America, right, at a senior executive management level. We've worked with a lot of unions through a lot of different companies, a lot of different industries. So I get unions. What are unions after? Unions are after benefits, unions are after pay, units are after safe work environments and vacation and things of that nature. It's all legit, it's all real. So, the negotiation is the ability to work so that the company. City of Ironwood can work with the union, the city employees successfully. I can tell you firsthand, the most expensive expense to a business is employee retention. So it's very important to me that we can get together and strive successfully as a corporation. And as union employees working in the corporation.
Thank you, Mr. Roush. Mr. Stenstrom?
Yeah, when I turned eighteen, I became a, a teamster of nine fourteen. And I felt so confident having a union representatives help me with. Safety in the shop, since the shop is pretty dangerous. You know, timekeepers trying to read down your neck to mark down everything that you can do to. To, when negotiations come around again, that they can use that, that you're, you're spending too much time on something. So we should not pay you anything more, even if the cost of living goes up. It's, and again, all the Bennys were so nice, you know, how many vacation days do you get a year? And what days off you get and that you do have forty hours a week, that you have a real job.
Thank you, Mr. Stenstrom, Corpin, or, sorry.
Yep. I've been on both sides of it as a teacher. I have been on the, a union teacher. And then as a school principal, I was on the other side of the fence. And then even with the city government, you're kind of in the, the middle. You have to listen to the city employees, you have to listen to the city management staff and try to come to a decision. So, I think, given my experience, it's taught me how to work with both sides. It's also taught me to listen objectively. And at the end of the day, we want to be fair, but we also want to make sure that we have efficiency within the city. We also want to make sure that we're promoting a respectful and open relationship between management and the staff. And at the end of the day, we want to have Ironwood as a place where people really want to work and come to.
Thank you, Ms. Corpin. Mr. Dean?
Yeah, at city attorney, I was on the negotiating team for the city when dealing with the ASME union and the police union. I know how that works. I think I have a decent relationship with public safety and with ASME. And. I understand each side has a, has a. Position to take and the idea is to come together and figure it out and solve our problems. And I think that my experience, I know, I can help you do that.
Thank you, Mr. Dean. Okay, so what we're going to do is I'm going to ask for two minutes on the clock. And I'll give you two minutes to prep your closing statement, at which point you will give in two minutes. Instead of one minutes to make a closing statement, we'll start with Ms. Corpin for closing statements. So you have two minutes to prep. And then we will start the rotation through. If we could start the. Okay, Ms. Corpin, we'll take two minutes for closing statements and your time begins now.
Okay, just to reiterate, my name is Lauren Corpin and I appreciate this opportunity to come and answer your questions and speak with you. I would love to remain on the city commission to keep Ironwood moving forward. In my time on city commission, I've learned so much. It's not just go in and sit down and make decisions. There's just so much you have to learn and so much that citizens don't get to see and all the inner workings and all of the work that city staff does. And getting that background knowledge and making informed decisions has really been valuable and I think that is really important. I want to keep doing what I can for the city. I want to make Ironwood and keep making Ironwood a positive place to live. Support the positive community environment and all of the changes that are going on and it's really moving in the right direction and I want to keep the momentum going. I'm really grateful for this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corpin, Mr. List.
Thank you. Again, I'm Ryan List and I appreciate the opportunity to be here today, even though this was kind of terrifying, ill-disclosure. But nonetheless, and I've talked about this before, when I, when I first moved here. I got involved in some groups that were trying to retain and bring young people to the area. And I, you know, I was new and substantially younger than I am now and it was a great experience. But one thing that caught me that was, I thought was interesting at the time was the, the statement like, that, that was said to me when I would make suggestions. You don't know, you're not from here, even though I've lived in this community for several years. And I think that sentiment has changed through the years and at the, for a positive, very much so. Like, I feel part, like I'm part of the community. And I think it took some time. And I really want to maintain that level of community, that real feeling, that focus we have on one another. And being, you know, residents of Ironwood and of the Gogeta Grange, I think that's important. So that's really where I want to keep the momentum. The city's done a good job to do that. The downtown revitalization, those sort of things have really brought the community together. Platter Day, great activity, you know, that was awesome. So I think that, I think that's where I want to continue to move forward and, and with the positive progress. I've served in the library board and a brief stint on the planning commission. All those things, I have a good grasp of what's going on within the city. Additionally, within the work I do in higher ed, I work with budgets, I work with grants. And I work with evidence-based practices, I had mentioned. I think those need to be incorporated in the work that we do. I have kids. They like it here. They like the schools, they like the community. I want to, again, with everything that's going on, I want to be a positive influence for them and keep, you know, and, and do my part and be part of the city. And again, moving things forward in a positive manner. So, that's, that's really why, why I'm running. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. List. Mr. Milver?
Thank you. So, so where do I begin, right? Oh my goodness. So, so, so nice to see this big crowd here today, all people that volunteer, all people that I see. First Fridays, for example. How fun is our town with First Fridays? And, and, and the people, the crowd has grown from, from ten years ago, maybe there was just twenty or thirty of us that were attending every First Friday. Now, sometimes there's two or three hundred people. So how wonderful is that? Volunteers, if we didn't have a great group of volunteers, half of what we've been able to do would have founder'd and folded. I talked about Sisu earlier, how it brought people to our town, how it gave us an identity. Just across the street, I've been lucky to be a civic center board member for ten years. And you know, we have the polar bears, the ice crystals, and now the lumberjacks. And we're the envy of Upper Michigan with that hockey team here. And as far as businesses go, when those hockey players play every every two weeks, their families are all from out of town, their relatives, their kids, their their grandmas and grandpas, and everyone's coming to Ironwood. And they're seeing this quality product, and then kids are running around in that, at those games, and the music's blaring, and everybody's having fun again. I love it. I love Platter Day. You couldn't, you couldn't, you couldn't, it's so easy. You show up and they take a great picture. But 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 the camaraderie you feel with all the people that are there, everybody's in Platte. Everybody's sort of fuzzy and warm and so 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 let me just say this, folks, you know? Our our town was built on great traditions, mining, civic organizations, great businesses. We struggled when the mines went down, but we're coming back. And we're coming back with a roar, and I think that the two thousand and twenties is just like the nineteen twenties. It's the great revitalization of Ironwood and keep it up, people.
Thank you, Mr. Mildred. Ms. Oliver?
So my, I have a vision for our community, that vision of this hope, immunity, and progress for our city's most precious resources, which is our families and our children. My family of six lives here, and I just do as much as I can as an active volunteer in our community to continue to make things for our children so that they'll want to stay here. And someday, when the aging population that we have here is not here, that our our children are going to be what continues on our community. And instead of leaving to go other places, that they'll want to come back here like I did. And so I would love to see, you know, right now, I know that our community faces critical challenges that impact our youth as far as things like the increasing rates of family instability and limited after-school programming and this growing economic pressures for working families. And how can we continue to improve that? And I would love to see, you know, more family support programs. I really would love to see a safe community center that improve, that promotes healthy living for all in our community. And I would like to commit to be building a stronger, more connected community where every family can thrive and every child can be successful, where we support the dream of financial, through financial allocations for programs and opportunities, youth programs, family support services, educational resources, and community infrastructure that helps to support our future. I believe that we can transform our community by investing in our children's future. I would love to see, again, kind of, I'm focused on a YMCA model of life in general, and that is youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility, and hoping to continue to impart that through my role as a city commissioner.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver Eigel. Mr. Ralph?
Yes. Right. Well, thank you, Ken Roush, again, born and raised in Chicago. I got the, I don't know, because I wasn't born here too, but I've been here for twenty-one years. And I will challenge that I do know, because I have a lot of experience that I'm bringing to the organization and to the city. I'm here to stay, so you guys be careful. I love it. Built a successful business, looking at opening up another business. I am a strong advocate of change. I know how to work collectively and get things done, to add things, to change things and to delete things. So let's focus on what's working and make that better. What's missing and what do we need to work? Let's work on figuring out what we can add to make, to improve it, to make it more modern in some areas, to make some additional investments and additional opportunities and delete. Let's get rid of the trash and take care of what we don't need and want here anymore. So I bring a corporate experience to the situation. I bring multiple big, small-town, medium-sized-town experience with me. And to a couple of the other comments, let's, what are we going to do generational, right? What's what's in it for the kids? Why would they want to stay? The soccer moms that are busy with the businesses and with the families and all that stuff, what can we entice them? What can we do to further develop and give opportunities to that type of community that's going to be the next generation of Ironwood? I would just, in closing, I would say I'm pretty good at managing time, people, and money. So put me in coach, I'm ready to play.
Thank you, Mr. Roush. Mr. Stenstrom?
Yeah, I wish to be a city commissioner. I think I would do many, with my many talents, I believe I could make things happen in a good way here. One of the things I was thinking of is how do I explain where I'm running for? And the thing is, I want to think of Ironwood where people count. The old, the young, the newcomers. I'm looking for a little bit more a gentle approach of problems in this town. I think it would be good that we would have maybe a caseworker to be part of the police department here just to not to have a, you know, armed officer come over and take care of problems. Something that can maybe be set up as a meeting place in the police office or at the police station or at city hall to one-on-one or family conflicts can be taken care of. That's what I would really push for if I become a commissioner, is that we do have a caseworker that is for this town. I would like to see much more in a way of city blanking taking care. I live in a very heavily old industry part of town where the city works used to be, and it's across the street, and we call it the the old salt barn. And there's a lot of light and trash around that building. And our street is still just gravel. And it kicks up a lot of dust, so when anything happens over there, we get a lot of noise and dust, which is not very good for the health of our community.
Thank you, Mr. Stenstrom.
Kim Swartgren running for city commission, I ran for city commission about sixteen years ago because I was angry at the city for what they were doing. I thought, I'm going to get elected and I'm going to go in and change things. But then you realize government is a big old boat, and it turns very, very, very slowly, little steps, little steps. So that's part of where I found my passions. I love being able to tell people like, why don't you spend money on the roads? Why are you spending money on plants and banners and parks and stuff like that? But when you tell somebody like, oh, we have a million dollars, but we're only paying like ten thousand dollars because there's a million dollars worth of stuff. So I'm passionate about telling and communicating people, what have we got going on? You know, because there's so many negative things, why doesn't the city do this? Why doesn't the city do that? I want to be that person. It's like, oh, but we are doing this. I get excited, like, we should see what we got coming up next. We're talking about people about housing and things like that. And it's, it's not actually as easy it looks too. It's like you always have to be available. Like, I get emails, I get phone calls, I go to the grocery store, and sometimes it takes me a very long time to get out of the grocery store because I'll come this, I'll come that. So I just want to be that person. I feel like I'm bringing the experience, like I said, sixteen years. I've been on multiple boards. My job at the prison was to make sure that people got an education, got a job, get housing. So I know what the struggles are. I know what the basic things are. You know, for me, I think housing is core to get people in new pay, new faces, new places and things like that. I'm proud of where we live and what we do. We have a lot of volunteerism, like was mentioned. If we didn't have the volunteers here, we wouldn't have Sisu and a lot of the other events that we have, you know, Festival of Ironwood. I'm also a person that volunteers. I try to fundraise wherever I can, cancer hospice. I do the clinics, I'm a Lions member, and I'm just kind of a go-go person. And I think that my experience led me to believe I have a pretty strong understanding of the needs, the people who are active, with the people need to be contacted, and the processes. And all that takes a while, but I'm very excited to hopefully get elected again.
Ms. Corpen?
And I talk with my hands.
Mr. Dean?
I'm Tim Dean, and I'm running for city, Ironwood City Commission. And Jim Mildred gave my closing statement. I have to keep an open mind, listen to all sides, make a decision that will advance, that makes us, will make the city prosper and advance the work that has been done so far by Jim Mildred, Lauren Corpey, and Kim Corpen. I'll look out for the health, welfare, and safety of the citizens and use my experience as a city attorney to guide my decisions. I know the city staff. I can talk to them all, I know them all. And we've got a great city staff here. You're proud of them. Will work with them, and I can work with them because I know them. And will do what I can to make Ironwood even greater.
Thank you, Mr. Dean and Mr. Frank.
Well, Steve Frank, I mean, if you can't tell, I'm a pretty informal person. Okay, I'm Steve, I'm not Mr. Frank. I sit back here, I lean back, I just talk. If I had my way, this seems excessively formal, to be honest to me. If I had my way, all the candidates would have been sitting back here in like a semi-circle, honestly, just discussing the issues and discussing them with you. So you could say, hey, Steve, wait, did you really mean what, mean that? And I can clarify, and something that another candidate says that spurs a thought that I have, because I guarantee you, even down here with us, there's very little listening going on unless you had already answered the question. And you're sitting there busy scribbling out your thoughts, you're not listening to what any of the other commissioners are saying. Also, almost all of the questions tonight, I mean, they deserve much more than a one minute to give an answer. But all that aside, I favor a back-to-basics approach to leadership. What does that mean? Clean neighborhoods, consistent code enforcement, and to revitalize downtown. We need better communication from the city, whether that's about construction projects and schedules, posting draft minutes of the city meetings in timely fashion, and video of all city meetings. D I D A, Planning Commission, Parks and Rec, all of that video should be posted, not just city commission. And finally, we need a rec center. We used to have a teen center. We used to have a senior center. We need an all-ages rec center. Nothing extravagant, not crazy amounts of money being being spent. Some pool tables, dartboards, card tables, couches, whiteboards for tutoring, a space for face-to-face socialization. In other words, back to basics. Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Thank you to you, our audience members, both in person and virtually attending. I think there are a little over a dozen that were online right now. And thank you to our candidates for participating. Again, if you still have questions of the candidates that were not addressed tonight or only partially addressed, then we encourage you to contact the candidates directly. Thank you to the League of Women Voters, the Ironwood Chamber of Commerce, and the volunteers for hosting this forum, and Go Givick Community College, providing the space and the technology. And that concludes our open forum.